Hi everyone, Pastor Galen, Lead Pastor at Cheyenne Hills Church. Thank you so much for joining us on this podcast. We hope that these podcasts will be a real encouragement to you on your spiritual journey. You can also connect with Cheyenne Hills at cheyennehills.org. Hope you enjoy the program. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the podcast. And in studio today, I have Shelley Downham, and Shelley, running for school board. Tell us a little bit about you and kind of your why. Why did you jump into this race?
Okay, so a little bit about me is that I am born and raised in Wyoming. I grew up in Laramie, across the hill. I am, let's see, I am a University of Wyoming graduate. I have a degree in communications. And I have lived across the country in different states, and then it's always brought me sort of back to Wyoming. In 2002, my husband told me we were moving across to Cheyenne, and I said, "Have a good life." No, I'm just kidding. We love Cheyenne. I came to Cheyenne in 2002 with a sixteen-month-old child. So I've raised my three children here. And what got me started really is that I am a parent first and foremost. It's the most, it's the best thing I'll ever do in my life. It's the best contribution I'll ever to make to society, and so I take it very seriously. As I was raising my kids, I had the ability to and the luxury to stay at home with them. And that was afforded to me through, you know, my husband and our, and the things that we chose for our children. With that, having my kids go through school, it was very important to me that I understood what my kids were, you know, being taught day-to-day, what, what they, not only that, but what, you know, the relationship with the teachers was, what the principal was, what the culture of the school was, regardless of what school it was. And it was important to me, and so I began to foster relationships with principals and teachers and other kids and their parents, and learning the culture, and it became just part of my daily life. And as my oldest one was in school, my kids are each two and a half years apart in age, but three years in school. So I would have an older one in school, and then I would walk through the halls of the school through, you know, as I was doing PTO things, or as I was helping teachers, anything like that. I would walk through the halls of the school with my other two in tow in a wagon. And so they were there from the very beginning as well. So it's been important to me to be involved, to be an involved parent. And I think that that is really where this all stems from. It mostly stems from, I am running for the South Triad seat. And so I am running because as my kids, with the involvement through elementary school that I've had, it didn't stop at junior high, and it didn't stop at high school. I now have two South High graduates and one current sophomore attending still. So I still have a child in the school.
Very involved. Yes, you are. That's good.
And so that is one thing that has brought me is that as I was preparing my kids and as they were getting older, and the people would ask, you know, "Where are your children going to school here in Cheyenne?" And I would tell them Johnson Junior High, or they would ask my twelve-year-old and say Johnson, and their face, an adult, would treat my child like, "Oh, I'm so sorry." And that really, after about the third time, I started to say something. Like, is there an issue with that? Is there a problem with that? You know, and then everyone would back off, you know, but, but there is a disparity in this town. And it's a very big one, and it is pointed towards the South Cheyenne community and the South Triad. Joe mentioned the other day, and he likes, continues to mention that Sun Valley area is part of the South Triad, which that is where I live. And so I am part of the Sun Valley Triad, but that doesn't mean I'm any less South Side or South Side community, because my kids have been, have grown up through all those schools. They have participated with friends across the city that have ultimately chosen to go to other schools, even though they were supposed to be in the same school, based on our boundary, based on where we live. And it's been a very difficult road. And as a parent of someone who, or children, multiple children, who are involved in activities, and athletics, and academics, and are high achieving, and are involved, it's very difficult to, to operate and teach your children to continue the road, to lift where they stand, and not to abandon ship. Because of, of the marginalization that has been towards the South Triad.
Well, you know, I personally, you know, my kids, we were, they were going through high school, and I was in another state, actually. So I didn't, I really don't have that feel of under, you know, I, I know it's there, but it's, you're, you're in it and feel it. And that's, that's good. I mean, I'm not good, but it's, sorry for, sorry for the hard stories, but it's good that you're a part of that.
I just would ask for, for you to, to visualize or think of a time in your life that you have felt marginalized by, by the majority. And, you know, that, that is something that people in this town, I have run into quite a few times, close friends even, where they just say, "Those aren't the kind of kids that I want my kids with." Knowing me, knowing my family, knowing our core beliefs, knowing who we are, and that, that, it's very hard to swallow. You know, when you're treated that way, or marginalized just because of where your children go to school. Now add on your, the color of your skin, add on your socioeconomic class. You know, I don't have those hardships, as a lot of people in our South community do. And so you add that on, and then tell me where you feel these people, why they, why they feel marginalized, and why we feel underserved.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you're, your voice for them, and that's good. I'm gonna just read a couple of, maybe, maybe just kind of dovetail a little bit to where, there's a couple of standard questions I've been asking. One of those questions is, who's the client? When, if you're on the school board, who do you believe is the client in education? Is it the teachers, is it the student, is it the parent, is it other? Who's the client?
All of the above. I would say all of the above, because, but I will start with the fact that the school board is a public entity. It is there, the district is a public entity. It is there to serve the children. It is there to serve and to increase our education of our children. It is there to make sure that things are being taught, and that we can have a high level of education. Now with that, and most of our children in the school districts being under the age of eighteen and not being adults, we have some adults, of course, but then because of that, that goes on to the children, on to their families. The families have the ability as well. We need to support their families. If we're, if we intend to support students, we should be supporting families. And if we intend to support students, we should intend to support our district administration, or not district, but like school administrators, and our teachers. So if we intend to, to support those students, all of these people do come into play in feeling supported and having a stake in the district where they are happy.
Okay, very good. Here's a, here's a case that happened. It's, may come to our school board, but it's like, it's one of those questions I've been asking everybody. It's in a recent news report from Sweetwater County here in Wyoming. We, we read of concerns of a local parents, of local parents who were told that the school district had every right to withhold information from parents regarding their children, how they would present themselves at school. This has created a scenario where parents would be informed as to whether a child could receive an ibuprofen for a headache, and yet not talk about their identity. If that came to our school board, and you're on that school board, how, how would you address this question?
So first and foremost, the comparison, I think, between offering a Tylenol for a headache and having something that comes up mid-year. We're all aware as parents that at the beginning of the year, we fill out quite a hefty, online, it's now online, thank heaven. When you're repeating that two, three, four, five times, however many kids you have in the district at the time, it gets a fairly redundant, but yes, you are, you are offering, you know, yes, my child can have their picture taken. Yes, my child can have ibuprofen, or whatever it is you are, you know, saying yes, or giving permission to that. That is not, is different in the, where a situation may come up during the year that is not thought out, it's not premeditated, it's not something you can technically opt into, or anything like that. These are situations that are handled as they come. And so what I would say is that teachers, first and foremost, have the safety of the student in mind. And I think that teachers know our students, and sometimes they know maybe a different side of our student than we, than as parents do. I think that can be a good thing. I think that if parents are involved in the, in the teaching and the education and with their teacher, they should have a fostered relationship with that teacher, so that the teacher, A, could feel comfortable speaking to the parents, even if the child is not. There's, needs to be advocacy for any type and any kind of student that we have, and that's my big thing. I'm also, I failed to mention, I'm also a Realtor, so I deal in negotiations every day. I'm also a trained mediator. And so I have mediated situations such as this, with reintroduction of kids into their home after they've been taken out into foster care, things like that. I've seen these things. And so I guess to me, that's why it's important to have that fostered relationship with teachers. When I have a question, if something happens in class behavioral or academic-wise, I have the ability to go to the source, to the teacher, because I feel comfortable. They know who I am, I know who they are, they know my intentions for my child, and that's where that relationship should lie, is everyone should go to the source. Now, having said that, with the district running a heavy hand as such, as Sweetwater County appears to, I don't feel that the district has the right to run a heavy hand like that, because there, again, the stakeholder is the parent and the family. So I do believe that in the situation, if it beyond the safety of the child, that there are situational things that would come into play regarding that.
So that, so that the teacher would be required or to withhold information, or required to talk with the parent about the situation?
I would never advocate for teachers to withhold information.
I thought you were going, I just wanted to get, that's where I thought you were going. Okay, curriculum. There's, now, I've said this, and I've messed this up a few times.
It's not curriculum, it's a book.
There's a book, there's books that are in the library, and there is curriculum, and to keep those things separate. Okay, so there's been, and this is gonna come up. It's already, it's already come up. I mean, honestly, the reason I'm, I've realized the importance of, and the values of the people on the school board, because the power is the school board. It's what I've discovered in this understanding my, you know, well, that's above my head, go to here, and I've gone through the process, and landed, okay, this is where the, the answers are. Curriculum. So there's, there's two books out in the Trona County. I've been told they're also in our libraries. I've had other people say it's not, so I'm not gonna say. But allegedly, these books are in our libraries, in our high school, and junior high is what I understand as well. One's gender queer, one's a transitional book, about trans. Now, as I looked at the graphics, they're, they're blurred out, but it's a cartoon, it's, there's, there's dialogue, and it's, in my, my personal opinion, it's pornography. Others say that's not, so I'll let you kind of sort through that. But people are saying, "Why is this book, these books on our, in our libraries, and should they be, do you have a thought or opinion?"
Well, I'm, I should have a thought or opinion, right?
Yeah, because if, if you get on this board, I think this question's probably gonna come to you.
Absolutely, it's already come. I've already talked about it quite a bit, in all the forums that I've done, all the Facebook and social media, you know, attacks or questions, depending on where people are coming from. But yeah, as far, let me, let me go back to my, my parenting, when I was in with my kids. And, and I have to say, I've thought about this quite a bit. I've thought about how I would handle that, had something come up like that with my children. I want to say from the very beginning here, that I have never, from the time that my children started kindergarten until current day right now, my children have never come into contact with such books, ever. And so not saying that they're not there, it's just not something that they've either sought out or have been, you know, given, or anything as such. And nothing even questionable unto the nature of that, beyond health class, which, you know, there's a health class there that they can go into. And of course, I'm, as a parent, again, I'm aware of that too, because I go and I preview those, those videos, which I have also done, to make sure it is appropriate and it's age-appropriate for my child, because those are the conversations that I need to be having at home with my children, right? So as far as I know, I have never seen any of those books. I have only seen them through the, the, the conversation that's being had now. And as far as, you know, my knowledge that, that hearing other people talk, hearing librarians talk, I have sought out librarians that are past, I've sought out librarians present, knowing the librarians while my children are in school, never has anything like that ever come up. I have, you know, spoke, there is a weeding protocol in the board that they do have. They have ways of how they acquire books that are, is stringent, and how they review those. They have a weeding process of whether they make the cut or not make the cut.
And when you say the board, is it the school board that's making this decision?
Yeah, the school board policy. That's in school board policy.
And so is the school board a part of that decision, or they just, they set up a committee?
They set up policy to follow.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
They set up policy to follow in, in the, their highly trained, yeah, the vetting process, yes, thank you. The highly, you know, the trained librarians, that type of thing, so, which they're schooled to do. So, and it's interesting, because I have a daughter that's very interested in reading. Well, two of my kids are, my third is a history buff like crazy. And so he reads, but he doesn't read, he reads, you know, about airplanes and things like that, which is great. But, so I had to either read ahead for my children to find, you know, to make sure that these were appropriate or age-appropriate. Or when my second one was so voracious that I couldn't keep ahead, I had to seek out help. I sought out help from school librarians, I sought out help from the public librarians. And with that, she is very interested in going into the library sciences, and knowing that, and studying what you have to do to be able to become a librarian. It's not just you love books and you get to be a librarian. It's very highly trained. They are certified in ways to be able to do that. And so I trust, I do trust our librarians, I do trust the training that they have. I do trust that if those books are available for, for kids, that it is something that is needed. Maybe it's not needed for you, maybe it's not needed for me, maybe it may be needed for somebody else that doesn't have the support system at home, doesn't have the moral values that have been taught prior, or anything like that, or is just looking for verification that I am validated, because I can see myself in this text.
Okay, so that kind of fits maybe another question. Just, I think of the thing, the reason, and I think I maybe I mentioned this earlier, the reason I kind of got into this was not necessarily because of those books, although that's come to my, you know, when you get going down this road, you find, just like you, you get exposed to a lot. It's like, wow, you have to make a value decision. And the question I have is, you know, I, I talked to a school board person one time that, she was a member of the school board, had values that I would, I would share, and it's like, that person shared their values, and I said, "Wow, I, I line up with those values." But yet, when, when it came to implementing the policies, the, the values weren't a part of the policies. Basically, I was told, it's like, well, I had to kind of check my values here, because I have to rule in a, in a broader case with, you know, all these students. Question is, that I have, so do, should values, should my own personal values impact what I think? Or do we, do we check our values at the door when it comes to these decisions?
Yeah, so I, you know, I, it was interesting, because I did have an opportunity to watch the, your previous podcast. And I would have to agree with, you know, Kristi Clausen said that that permeates who she is. And I agree with that. Your values are who you are, what you believe and what you take is who you are, and you don't, you don't change that, you don't check those at the door. But you also have to know your audience. You have to know who you're serving and what those regulations are. And so I feel that I'm a, I'm a, I attend church every Sunday, a white Christian woman, you know, coming in and placing what those are on a public entity, pushing that one agenda or that one ideal, doesn't mean that I'm checking, you know, doesn't mean that that's, I have to do that, you know, to, to push that on other people, just because I might believe that. And so I also do believe that, that you can be conservative, and this is one thing that, you know, has been brought up, is that there's the conservative, these are the four conservative candidates. And I take a little bit of offense to that, because I am a conservative person as well. You can be a conservative person in your morals and your values and your thinking, and, but you can also be progressive in being open-minded and accepting and being kind, whether you agree or not. And that is something that I really struggle with, is because, especially when we are so extreme. It's either I'm a full-on left, or I'm a full-on right, and, and that's, that's not, that's not unifying at all. My stance is to have unity, respect, and equity across the district. And it starts with, you know, the first pot, filling in the pie, which is you can't have a full pie if you're missing a piece. And that piece that we've been missing is this South Triad piece. My community and the kids, and the people that my children attend school with are very different than what, you know, they may attend in East, or may attend in, in Central Triad. And so it's important that we have a full discussion, an open discussion, and being able to understand where people are coming from, from one end of the table to the other. And so for me, I, I do have, I have a deep abiding morals, guiding faith. I believe in our Christ, I believe, I am a Christian, but that doesn't mean that everyone is. It doesn't mean that because, you know, there's an atheist on the board, or there's an atheist within the schools, or a teacher, or someone that is Hindu, or Buddhist, or, you know, Muslim, or whatever, that doesn't mean that I'm, they need to push that ideology on me, or I don't need to push my ideology on them. If we were to take a look and to talk to each other one-to-one, we would have more commonalities than we think that we do. And that is where I want to stand, is that we have commonalities amongst all of this. And that there is, you don't have to swing one way right to get what you want, and you don't have to swing one way, the other way, extreme view, to get what you want. In mediation, we call that compromise, we call that a win-win situation. And the only way we come to that is through discussion, and through, through exploring what those principles may be and what solutions are. Compromise doesn't need to have a negative connotation, as it's sort of, we sort of define that.
So I'm gonna pick up on that, because that's, that's kind of where I think, I think I land. I mean, I certainly have a, my desire is to protect the hearts and minds of our kids. And, and what I, you know, and you may know this verse, I've quoted it, I think, every podcast, and I say, it's my why. And Jesus said, "If you cause one of these little ones who love me to stumble, it would be better to have a millstone wrapped around your neck, be cast the bottom of the sea." Those millstones are not flotation devices. I saw this, I saw where he said it, in this Sea of Galilee, he was right behind. I'm sure, I don't see him saying it in vitriol, I see it saying in, but in seriousness, this is a weighty. And so when it comes to things with our kids, and I'm sorry for the, the unkindness and the vitriol, apparently you've been exposed to, and it's, and I'm sorry for that. It's not fun. I've, I've dealt with some of that myself, it's not easy.
It's very prevalent in our city, and people who think that it's not, aren't paying attention.
Yeah, and I'm, and I am sorry for that, because that's not, you know, as you know, you know, we're, we're speak the truth and speak it in love. And with, without love, we're a noisy gong and a clanging symbol, right? So this whole idea to, to be able, and I'll just tell you, people bring these ideas, and it's, it gets escalated pretty quickly. I, I told one gal, you know, some of the best examples of Christianity are Christians, and some of the worst examples of Christianity are Christians. And it's like, you know, you can't, and some of the people speaking something that you agree with, they're doing it in a way, it's like, okay, that's not, that's not representing how. You know, and it's like, it's part of the, it's part of the arena that you're stepping, you know. But so the, the one that I get protective of, and so, and I've asked people about this, and some of the, I've heard people say, it's like, well, I guess, can't we, can't we keep sixth grade and under, can't we protect the hearts and minds of those kids? Why do they have to be exposed to some of the suicide ideation books that have, that have suicide ideation? Or there's, there's a book that is in second-grade classrooms, it's called Drama, and I, I went through the ranks of trying to understand, why is that book on this? It's about a homosexual encounter with these two young people. It's like, why is that, and why can't we agree that, why can't that be, and then, why can't that be set aside and let the families deal with that however they want? I was told that, another candidate, that, well, what if a person, there's a, there's kids that have two moms or two dads? And so, so now what we have to do is educate all the kids on, and normalize, so that they feel normalized and not marginalized. Listen, I don't want that child to feel marginalized, and I'll have to sit here and tell you, I don't know if I know the full answer to that.
I don't think anyone does, don't, because that's why we're having this discussion.
Right, but the conclusion is, we have to educate everybody, sixth grade and under, whatever age it is, that so-and-so has two mommies in this, why do we even have to talk about that? Why is that even part of education? Does that make any sense to my question?
I mean, yes, it does. If I did, we wouldn't be having this conversation. You know, there, there's, there's all kinds of things that we have to deal with in life. You know, Christ, Jesus saying, yes, you know, be, you know, protecting the children. He also did say that we should become submissive, be humble and kind, such as children. We ourselves should become as a little child. And so in that, in that context, that also to me means that we should be open and willing, and teach, you know, teaching tolerance, teaching love, teaching kindness. But if there's another conversation that needs to happen, whether it's for or against, whatever the, the general thought is, that needs to be had at home, and with your parents, and with you, and with your children. And, and I was talking to my husband last night about how, because I've thought a great deal about when my child entered, children entered kindergarten, to when my children graduated or currently in, has my parenting style changed? And the answer to that is no. It has not changed from that time. Parenting is involvement. It's the greatest work I'll ever do, to put those children out into this world, and to be able to teach them. And so when they are in the school system, they are going to the school system, and hopefully knowing who they are, because they've been taught that at home. Again, not everyone has that luxury to be able to do that. And so sometimes people are using the school system, public, mind you, to be able to, to find themselves within that. And so whether I agree or not agree, whether you agree or not agree with what that public education is, that people need to find themselves within that. If there's a different narrative or a framework that needs to be said to your child to make, for the questions that they may have, or the things that you want them to know, again, those need to be had at home. And, and again, I, I feel that.
No, I totally agree with you. So then, are you saying that, that, you know, educating everybody that Joey has two mommies is, is off limits for that, that age group? Is that what you're saying?
What age group? I mean, no. So if, so, so, give you an example, my daughter came home one time and was like, so-and-so's a vegetarian, you know, at school, and was like, oh, well, okay, you know, we're not vegetarians. Come on, we live in Wyoming, right? We're not vegetarians. Sorry, no, no hate to any vegetarians other. But, but that was not one thing, that that's something that I want my child to then start at second grade, mind you, second grade, to come in and say, "I'm a vegetarian." So I explained to her what vegetarian meant, you know, we had a conversation about that. We understood, we talked about, you know, why you need different things, and if that was her choice, that's her choice, but this is how our family was. And I feel like that was a framework that was given to my kid to be able to go, "Oh, okay," you know, well then go about life. And, and so, again, that's a luxury that I've had with my kids, and that's why I want to protect parent voices as well. But not all parents are that, you know, especially in, you know, the socioeconomic class, where, you know, you have, parents are working two jobs. You have kids, kids raising younger kids. You have kids, you have parents that, they're not not involved, they don't want to not be included. They just may not have the resources that are given to them. So part of the district, and giving that as a public education, is offering these resources to families that may or may not have those available to them. Is offering these resources to families that may or may not have those available to them.
Any final thoughts you have that you wanna, we didn't swerve in certain direction?
Yeah, no, I just, like I said, I just um I feel like um it's important that people understand that this is. This doesn't need to be a divisive, you know, discussion. Um on the school board, I chose to run for school board only once the South Triad one came open. And I I was, there were a lot of people that were helpful in getting that going and getting that, you know, the voice of that. And people within the triad, without the triad. Um I had started a change.org petition probably eight years ago or six or seven, somewhere in there. As I get older, I lose track of time. But um and then the next thing I know, Tim Bolan is calling me and asking me, you know, do you wanna sit on these subcommittees? Well, absolutely I do because I've sat through too many opportunities where my children have been bullied. I have been bullied. My, I've been bullied by other parents. I've been bullied by other kids, my children as well. We've been bullied by officials hired by the school district. We, you know, and so in sitting in that um that area. It's a hard place to be and knowing that there's not a lot of support for that. That is the reason why I decided to step up and run because to be honest. For the school district, we all have the same ideas. We want our children to succeed. Um and as far as um nobody else, Joe or Susan included. Um none, nobody has the South Triad experience that I have and that I bring to the table as a parent's voice. Of the actual, uh you know, being a person that's received that kind of treatment. And so I feel that it's important that there is an actual voice of parents and I know that. The platform I have is that Southsider for Life and that is to build pride within the community for anybody. And not just, you know, um for anybody that lives on the South Side, for anyone that lives. Um uh in in a community that de- looks is the little man, I guess, in town. And it's important to understand that there are institutionalized roadblocks that have kept this school from progressing. There are institutionalized roadblocks that have kept people of color in Cheyenne from progressing. Um and so it's important that people who have that real life experience. Um the school board especially for me is where I feel like we can make most the most change. Where we can bring that voice to the table and help other people stand in our shoes. Um I was part of the in her shoes discussion just this last week for domestic violence. And that has weighed a lot on me because I feel that not only for domestic violence. But in this position, we need to take an opportunity to stand in other people's shoes and we're not doing that. And that to me is where I would like to impress upon people before you make an accusation. Before you go and and respond to, you know, sensationalism. Or before you go and freak out about a social media post or something a teacher said or something like that, go to the source. Go educate yourself. Go find out what is actually happening and put everything in context. And then draw your conclusions as to what that may be.
Good word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley, Shelley Downham, South Triad. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for your time and. And with the way we sign off here on every one of these podcasts, it's kind of Nathan and my, Nathan's not here, so I'm having to speak for him. It's like. I'm missing him here, so but anyway, as you as you go about your day, we would encourage you to be strong and very courageous. God bless you guys.